Welcome, everybody. I, Councilmember Martz, call the March 21st, 2023 City Council Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting to order. Public comment. There are multiple public comment opportunities at this evening's, tonight's meeting. There's a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on tonight's agenda item. Members of the public may address the council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. If you are in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. We'll wait for a moment to see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Chair Martz, Rachel Wright would like to speak to the committee.
Wonderful. As a reminder, written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isiquawat.org. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, unmute your microphone if you're virtual or step up to the lectern if you're in person. State your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. And please limit comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. With that, we can go to public comment.
Just press the microphone on button there.
Great. Hi, my name is Rachel Wright, and I'm the vice chair of the Isiquah Arts Commission. And I want to thank you for your continued support and the funding that allows the Arts Commission to award grants to encourage the visual and performing arts in Isiquah. In our last round of granting, there were 15 organizations that submitted applications. And of these, more than half of the, and of these, more than half said that granting dollars would be used to cover space rental. The locations included city-owned facilities such as the Senior Center and Pickering Barn. I think this raises a few interesting questions and opportunities. First, how many artists and organizations are not participating because it's hard to find space or it's expensive? Perhaps we need to consider what kinds of resources artists and organizations really need. Is it granting actual dollars? Or is it thinking about providing free access to city-owned spaces? What can we do to make it easier for people to secure spaces at properties such as Pickering Barn, the Senior Center, or the Community Center? What other city-owned buildings might work? I hope we can work together to understand and support this need for space. We need to make it easier for creatives to connect, inspire, and create. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. City Clerk, do we have anyone online who's indicated an interest in speaking this evening?
Chair Martz, we have no virtual attendees so far.
All right. Well, we have no one else in the audience from the public, so with that, I think we can move on to approval of the minutes. Anyone have a motion?
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes, the minutes pass three to zero. With that, we will move on to our one and only item on the agenda this evening, ID 1245, Community Broadband Assessment, presented by Gene Paul, Management Analyst, and Dave Knauer, Consultant with the Timmins Group, and Andy Fox, also a consultant with the Timmins Group. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair Martz, and good evening, council members. If you bear with me for just one second while I get the presentation up.
While he's bringing that up, I'll point out that there's going to be a staff presentation. There'll be committee Q and A. We'll take any additional public comment if anybody in the, if there's anybody remotely who joins us by that time, and then we will move to a potential committee recommendation. Gene, you ready to go?
Yes, thank you. Again, good evening. My name is Gene Paul. I'm the Management Analyst in the Executive Office. Joining us virtually from the East Coast this evening are two of the consultants from the Timmins Group, Andy Fox and Dave Knauer, and together we'll be presenting tonight on the Community Broadband Assessment. There are two main purposes for the presentation this evening. The first is to provide the results of the broadband assessment that was conducted from October to November of last year, and the second is to seek direction on the administration's In terms of actual direction needed, the administration is proposing three recommendations and looking for concurrence with them. These are largely based on the recommendations found in the consultant's report. They include requesting Internet service providers, or ISPs, replace existing plans as recommended in the report, working with ISPs to build or improve infrastructure in underserved neighborhoods, and developing an education program around both reducing speed loss and available discount programs. As brief background, the community survey conducted in the spring of 2021 helped identify the need for a broadband assessment. In that survey, close to 78% of respondents replied that they planned to continue working from home at least one day a week after the pandemic. For those who worked from home, about 70% of respondents said high-speed Internet was the most critical amenity. The administration was also aware at that time of anecdotal evidence that portions of the city experienced Internet service that did not meet the 2021 broadband speed standards of 25 megabits per second download and 3 megabit per second upload. The administration and city council discussed the need to conduct a broadband assessment at the July 30, 2021 Budget and Strategy Workshop, and this item was subsequently included in the 2022 budget. The administration issued a request for proposals for consultant firms to conduct the assessment in June of 2022, and the Timmins Group was selected for that work. The survey component for this assessment was conducted in October and November of last year. At this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to the Timmins Group team to help describe the survey and the results in greater detail.
Great. Thank you, Gene. Our project approach involved the four primary tasks you see outlined on this slide. For the first task, we researched and mapped broadband availability and coverage for the city. Those web maps and the indexed catalog of geographic information system data used to create those maps are now available to you and the city. For the second task, we identified the stakeholders that we wanted to engage about their access to broadband. This was helpful in determining community outreach strategies for this project and ongoing broadband discussions that may continue well into the future. For the third task, we developed an Internet speed test and user survey personalized to the city to custom, to collect data on Internet usage, Internet providers, service plan pricing, user satisfaction, and demographics. Outreach messaging for the survey was conducted by the communications team of the mayor's office. For the last task, we published a website and story map where users can see the results of this project and view maps to understand how their Internet service compares to other city residents and learn about broadband in general. Now I'm going to turn this over to Dave, who is going to provide some background on the project, summarize their results, present key findings, and the recommendations we have made. Dave?
Thank you, Andy. Next slide, please. So, Timmins Group created a website to host the survey and to collect user-generated speed test data. We use that with OmniUCLA platform, which has been used and trusted by many other state governments for this purpose. So some of the metrics we collected with that speed test were download speeds, upload speeds, measures of latency such as ping and jitter, as well as the user's device type, such as a mobile phone or tablet or a desktop computer. Next slide, please. So we also created a survey to gather user information. The responses we collected from this survey were from October 5th to November 24th, 2022, and we had 220 surveys completed. 186 of those were usable as final data points located within the city limits. Users taking the survey were asked to copy and link the speed test information, and then we verified that with the final dataset. Metrics that we collected from the survey were the user's location, their connection type, their broadband package cost, their Internet service provider, the usage and satisfaction that they had with their service, as well as additional demographic information. Next slide. This, this display is one of the interactive maps available on the story map section of the website we created. So this map has the final 186 data points displayed by download and upload speeds from each respondent's test. This provides a visual representation of household Internet service throughout the city, and each point, the inner circle represents the user's download speed, and the outer circle represents their upload speeds. Next slide. So some of the metrics that we collected and displayed with this map were the total survey responses, so that represents each individual household, as well as the mean download speed, mean upload speed, and the median download and median upload speeds. We also identified how many households were below 100 megabytes per second download speed and 20 megabytes per second upload speed, and 129 total households were below that threshold. One of the main causes of this was that mean upload speed, which was only 12 megabytes per second, which is clearly below the 20 megabytes per second upload threshold listed there. Next slide. So that threshold that we used between served and underserved was based on Washington State's definition for acceptable broadband service, as outlined in Senate Bill 5715, which defined acceptable broadband as speeds greater than or equal to 100 megabytes per second for download and 20 megabytes per second for upload. So everything below that level was considered underserved. The state standard is only used for goal-setting, government planning, and allocating funding, and it is not a requirement for Internet service providers to provide service at those speeds. Additionally, between the underserved category and the unserved category, we classified that based on a 2015 definition that was outlined by the FCC for acceptable broadband, and again, that was for federal planning and funding purposes only, and that threshold was 25 megabytes per second for download and 3 megabytes per second for upload speed. Next slide. So our survey results indicated that 70% of the respondents within the city who took our speed test were not served. The main cause of that was upload speeds being below the acceptable level as defined by Washington State. So 30% were above that threshold, and 35% were below the 20 megabytes per second for upload speed only, while 10% were below the 100 megabytes per second download speed only, and 25% were below both of those. So improving upload speeds alone would decrease the number of underserved households by half, so that would take it from 70% down to only 35% remaining. Next slide. So this chart shows the percentage of survey respondents, broken down by which Internet service provider they were subscribed to at the time. As you can see, the majority of residents in Isiquah were Comcast subscribers. For Comcast and WAVE users, the Internet service plans typically provided are, what are called asymmetric, so they have different levels for, different speeds for download speed and upload speed, and these typically, a good number of those plans do not meet the new state standard for 20 megabytes per second upload speeds. For WAVE, all of the plans that they had offered only provide 5 to 10 megabytes per second upload speed, so anyone with those WAVE plans will automatically be categorized as underserved. And for Comcast, five out of the seven plans listed were between 10 to 20 megabytes per second, and sometimes even the 20 megabytes per second maximum available speed may not be enough because users can often have speed loss at their actual devices. Next slide.
I have a question before you move on. I have CenturyLink, and I routinely check the speeds that I get, and I have 300 up, sorry, 300 down, 30 up. So you're saying, but you're saying CenturyLink generally doesn't provide 20 megabit? Because I'm, like, I'm getting 30 up.
CenturyLink, it can definitely depend on which...
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I said CenturyLink, I meant Comcast. Sorry.
Comcast, I believe it would depend which plan tier you're subscribed to, so which cost and plan that is, but when we had looked, I believe the first three plans had a maximum listed upload speed of 10 megabytes per second. The next two were at 20 megabytes per second.
You mean bits, right?
Bits, yes, and then the gigabit extra was 35 megabits per second for upload speeds.
Okay, so they do offer plans that are above 20. It's just some plans are below 20. This, this, this slide makes it look like they don't offer any, that they don't have any plans that offer at least 20 megabit up, but that's not what you mean, correct?
Correct, yeah. I had stated, I believe it was five out of the seven plans listed were 20 or less.
Okay. Okay, you can keep going.
All right. Next slide. Regarding the estimated speed loss, from sources that we had looked at, the average estimated speed loss across different technology types was typically about 21%, and there's a number of household factors that can cause this speed loss, such as the way that the equipment is set up in a user's home, what method they're using to connect, what device type they're using to connect, and also the device age. Next slide. So we looked at, based on the metrics we were collecting, what the device type and connection type were from each respondent. Roughly 65% of respondents were using laptop or desktop computers, while 34% were using mobile phones or tablets. For connection types, 73% were using Wi-Fi to connect, while 26.8% were using an Ethernet cable. Next slide. We found that users were 13% more likely to test with low speeds and be classified as underserved when they were using mobile devices instead of personal computers. We also found that respondents were 35% more likely to be underserved if they were connected via Wi-Fi compared to Ethernet. Some ways that users could improve their performance would be switching to a wired Ethernet connection, or additionally paying for a higher tier of service that would get them above that 100 megabit per second download and 20 megabit per second upload speeds. Next slide. Then we identified which neighborhoods had the highest percentage of underserved households from our survey, and these were Providence Point and Isiquah Valley, which were both 85% or above, 85% or greater. And the neighborhoods with the lowest percentage of households below 100 megabits per second and 20 megabits per second were Central Isiquah and Isiquah Highlands. Next slide. So we also looked at how many providers were available to see the number of different Internet plans residents could choose from, and Providence Point and South Lake Samamish were neighborhoods with the least broadband providers available, and also some of the highest number of underserved residents. So there were only three providers available to residents in those neighborhoods according to the FCC data. Isiquah Highlands and Central Isiquah were neighborhoods that had the greatest number of broadband providers available, at four to five providers each. Next slide. So this map is showing service throughout the city based on the underserved category, so that is using the FCC's broadband definition of 25 megabits per second download and 3 megabits per second upload. Again, this is not a requirement, but it's an older federal government threshold that is just used for planning and funding purposes. So this map was used to help identify locations that should be prioritized for service improvements, and when looking at unserved residents throughout the neighborhoods, Isiquah Valley, Old Town, and Newport had the highest percent of unserved residents. Next slide. So that helped identify locations that should be prioritized, and as I said, the neighborhoods with the highest percent of unserved are Isiquah Valley, Squawk Mountain, I believe, Old Town, and Newport. So unserved residents in those areas would benefit the most from the Affordable Connectivity Plan discounts that are available to low-income households, which would allow them to upgrade their service and increase the speeds that they're currently getting. So these ACP benefits are, per eligible low-income household, you can get a monthly discount of up to $30 per month off of your Internet service bill, and that is up to $75 per month for households on tribal lands. Additionally, there's a one-time discount of $100 off a laptop, desktop, or tablet, which could help people with older devices or people who are only on a mobile device to switch to a newer PC or desktop that may have less speed loss.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question? So the neighborhoods with the highest percent of unserved residents, and you're, and you define unserved as they don't currently have better than 20 down, 3 up, or they can't get better than 20 down, 3 up?
They did not currently have that at the time of the test.
So they did not have a plan that allowed for, they were not currently carrying a plan, their current performance? So this doesn't really say anything about whether they have the potential for better service, they just don't, they aren't carrying higher, they aren't carrying anything better than 20 slash 3, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So they may have that available to them, but it may be unaffordable at the current price point, or there may be another reason why they are not able to or not choosing to subscribe to a higher plan.
Yeah, I mean, okay, it seems weird to assume it's about affordability. That seems a pretty big assumption, but okay. I mean, they may just not care about having higher speed, right? I mean, it's, it's, the speed that they currently have is a fact. The idea that it's somehow about affordability seems a stretch, but okay, you can keep going.
Next slide. So some of the recommendations that we made were to potentially advocate to ISPs to replace asymmetrical plans, such as some seen by WAVE that had very low upload speeds with more affordable, equal-tier broadband packages that are directly above or matching the Washington State speed definition for broadband service. Additionally, to advocate for new or existing ISPs to build or improve broadband infrastructure in underserved neighborhoods, such as Providence Point or South Lake Samamish, so that there are more Internet options available. Another recommendation was to provide outreach to educate all residents on methods that can reduce speed loss in their homes, or provide outreach and information on the Affordable Connectivity Plan application process to assist low-income residents, allowing them to receive a discount on higher-tier broadband packages. And that concludes our recommendations.
Can I ask, so you define asymmetrical as, as just different upload than download? What, how do you define asymmetrical?
Yeah, yes.
And equal tier would be same speed up and down?
Correct.
Does, does that matter?
If they were raising the upload speed to something that is matching the download speed, and that, if it would be above the current listed definition, then that could benefit users who need higher upload speeds.
Okay, it's just the standard is 100 slash 20. All right, they just seem like unrelated issues, right? Whether somebody meets the standard versus whether it's an asymmetrical plan or a non-asymmetrical plan.
We have just seen that some of the providers, such as Highlands Fiber, who did have equal-tier plans, they did not have many, if any, residents who were below that threshold.
Can cable provide equal tier?
I believe so.
It's inherently asymmetrical connection, isn't it? So like, so like, the, what's the, not CenturyLink, what's the other one? Comcast? No, Comcast? Comcast, right? That, I mean, if it comes into your house by cable, that's, that's inherently an asymmetrical, isn't it?
That may be correct.
All right. I mean, I just don't know how such a service provider would provide equal tier, right? It's inherent to the, to the medium.
Members of the committee, we have representative from Comcast here, who I think has additional information. We'd like to finish the report and hopefully...
Well, we have a, we have a, we have a history of asking questions while reports are being given, right?
No, no, I'm just saying that, that the gentleman from Comcast is raising his hand to respond, and so I guess rather than call on him prior to the conclusion of the report, I would just note that he's raising his hand.
Thank you.
And will be available after we conclude the report.
Okay, and I think you guys have concluded the report, have you not?
Yes.
Okay. Back to you, Gene.
Thank you. Just in terms of timing and next steps, the administration's obviously looking for a direction from the committee this evening, and we intend to return at the May committee meeting with an update. This slide contains the three recommendations with the administration seeking the committee's concurrence, and that does conclude the presentation, so we're happy to answer any questions.
Just make a couple of comments before we get into the questions. This has been a very educational process for us.
This has been a very educational process for us. When the council requested that we look at this, certainly we don't have the expertise on staff to do this, so we were very fortunate to find a firm to help us do that. I think we knew all along that it really was a matter of trying to sort through neighborhoods, because all of the infrastructure is different, it's aged differently. And so if we were able to find through this survey that there were particular areas of the community to focus on, that that would be a plus. And I think we have that with the recommendations of the consultant this evening. I think a lot of the rest of this is further discussions with the providers here in Issaquah, hopefully starting that dialogue this evening and extending that over the next few weeks and then come back to the committee. I think, is that in May, are we going to come back, Gene?
Yes.
At your May meeting with a further update with that. We're also trying to get a sense from the council, based on hearing this, hearing from representatives that are with us this evening, what other direction you would provide. I think what we have laid out here, I think, makes sense, because we want people to have appropriate broadband. We can't force them to get high speed. We want, though, to be able, if they so choose to buy it, to get what they pay for. And so from the administration's standpoint, that's what we were hoping this would accomplish. But as the committee is reviewing this this evening, we would appreciate any additional direction you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator. Questions? Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. First, I think you both heard that there was some question about asymmetrical, if there could be a definition provided in the report or other appropriate place, I think that would help us level-set in terms of what we're talking about along the way. Next, I think that, I really appreciate this report. I participated in the survey and my dot's on there, and you could find my house if you want to, but I think that as just a consumer, working at home, as many of us are, I find that it's, it can be frustrating to have slower speeds when both of your kids are playing computer games at the same time, et cetera, et cetera. And I kind of take it as, well, that's, that's on me as a consumer, that I maybe have the wrong plan or am not up high enough in the levels of speed or what have you. But from this report, are we to take away, as a bottom line, that perhaps some of the items that are promised in packages, based on our findings, are not being provided?
Well, I think, as Dave pointed out, there's some inherent speed loss for every user, based on equipment, you know, where you're located in your house, things like that. But by and large, what I think what the consultants have found is that sometimes the package that you're subscribing to, even if you meet that, still may not be sufficient if we're targeting that state definition.
Okay, and then in terms of action that the council can take, we're looking at, you know, requesting the internet service providers replace existing internet plans or improve the broadband infrastructure along the way. I really wish Joe Forkner were here, because he was, he had served so many years on the Cable Commission. I don't know our current agreement, contract with our providers. Do we have anything more than, you know, the ability to request these things? Or do we have some additional tools that we can use going forward? I'd just like to hear that if we could.
Councilmember Joe, members of the committee, cities around America do not regulate internet access. They regulate cable television. And as the cable television piece of these businesses change and morph over time, our ability to have any regulatory role with internet service providers is difficult. We do have good relationships with our internet service providers. Certainly Comcast still has a franchise agreement to provide cable television services. Tim Smith, who's helping broadcast tonight's meeting, has been our longstanding liaison with Comcast. So as issues arise, we work with Comcast. Certainly, when the pandemic first hit, there were several internet concerns around the community, which we work closely with Comcast, and they spent a lot of energy and resources addressing those, those issues. So I would hope that, again, once the committee's had an opportunity to discuss this, that you'll send us back to work with the service providers, to share what we've discovered. I think it's very difficult to go to any company and say, people don't like their internet. That's not an effective issue to raise. I think now we have specific issues to raise with the providers, specific geographic areas, and hopefully that'll be the good basis for discussion. Again, all of the providers have been good partners with the city over a long period of time, and certainly, I don't know how, Tim would know, maybe he'll come down at some point during this discussion. There have been many internet, or many cable TV providers in Issaquah over time, that have been bought and rebought and over that time prior to Comcast having the franchise. But there's a long history of good cooperation. So again, we hope to use this report and your comments as a basis of discussion without any sort of regulatory ability to force anything upon these companies.
Okay, and if we wanted to develop a regulatory framework, that's really at the federal level with the FCC?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. I think the state of Washington, as the consultants have talked about, the issue of broadband access is a big one in communities all over America. Most of those questions, however, are what can you get at any cost? And there are many communities around America that cannot get any of these, these higher speeds at any cost, because the infrastructure doesn't exist. I think the challenge we have in Issaquah is that the infrastructure may exist, the infrastructure may need to be enhanced or improved because of additional users and additional speeds, and that would ultimately help our communities. But I think the issue of access, no, you know, no one is coming to us and saying, I live in Issaquah and I can't get internet. What they have been coming to us and saying, either I'm not getting the internet that I think I'm paying for, or it's inconsistent, and I think those were the issues that when Councilmember, Deputy Council President Hall brought this to the council's attention, was to try to address. And I think this report gives us some good data now to go back to the providers and have an informed discussion versus just simply saying, people call us and say they don't like their internet. And Tim is here.
Great.
I don't know if there's any, you hopefully heard most of what this, as you were coming downstairs. I don't know if there's anything you want to add or just be available for other questions.
Nothing to add directly. You summed it up pretty well. Thank you.
And in terms of the third point on your direction needed, just from a high level, the education program that you're thinking of putting together, is that so specific that we're going to be knocking on doors and leaving packets at doors for our 40,000 residents? Or is it more of a information session, kiosk, and maybe a community meeting of some sort? I'm just trying to measure the extent and the intensity of the program the city has in mind as we are initially thinking about this.
Well, we certainly, I don't believe, have the resources to go to every door. But I think it can be as robust as the council believes it should be. And I think one of the reasons we're here, committee, is to sort of get feedback from you and the request to come back at your May meeting. If you'd say maybe not every door, but every other door, what is it going to take to do that? Versus can we target the areas that have been identified in the report? Can we target community members that may qualify for some of these additional programs because of income? I think there are opportunities to identify those folks with existing information that we have. My sense is that, that would be the most cost-effective way to go about this versus a lot of blanket information, because some of our community members are very savvy toward this, they understand what they need to do. I don't know that they need the city of Issaquah to tell them that.
Councilmember Gene Sheldt, do you have any questions?
No, Councilmember Joe asked the question that I wanted to ask. Thanks.
Okay. Clerk, is it all right if I invited the representative from Comcast to speak for a couple minutes on the topics we're covering this evening?
David Van Moritz, who is here from WAVE Broadband.
That would be fine also.
And so he is there, and if he cares to jump in with this additional resource.
I should be, yeah, I would love to be fair to all parties involved, so one and all for three minutes each to each of them to speak to us, and we can start with the representative from Comcast first.
Perfect. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to participate in this, in this hearing about your report. Number one, Comcast agrees. This report has identified Issaquah is, is served and has a highly competitive marketplace, not only from the wire perspective, but wireless and other options at your disposal. So having a good competitive marketplace is, is, is great for your community. We also agree that the city can help educate. Our technicians are in your citizens' homes and educating on the age of their equipment. Maybe that's limiting the availability, where their modem is placed, along with the construction in the house. There may be a concrete wall that is preventing signal from going about, and we, you know, are always educating on trying to improve those Wi-Fi connectivities or try and resolve some of those older equipment things that do limit speed. But our, our big feedback is, is we think that this report doesn't give you the full perspective of what is happening. Your consultants have defined that everybody needs to have 100 by 20 speed, and that's not the way the definition is. It should be looking at the capabilities of the network. It should also be focused on what are your network internet service providers are doing for helping address that digital equity? And then what is the internet service providers doing to innovate and continue to invest in, in the area? We did provide your consultants that information in September, and I will pass along to the city council all of our response, and we were surprised that none of that information made it into their report. We know that our entire system well exceeds the 25 by 3 and exceeds the 100 by 20. Yes, we are a asymmetrical system, but even during the COVID outbreak, where everybody lived, worked, and entertained themselves at their house, we only saw the download-to-upload speeds of around 20 to 1. Normal capacity is 14 to 1. So that is why we feel that asymmetrical, in the majority of the cases, works very, very well. However, we know that there are higher users out there that have more upload needs, and we are also working to innovate our systems to do that. You may have seen during the Super Bowl, our announcement of our Xfinity 10G network. We are on the road to improving our, our network capacity, reliability, and also making sure that our network is secure. This is a multi-year upgrade, and Issaquah is definitely in the mix of how we are going about doing that. And also, in, you know, our track record in helping connect your, maybe lower-income individuals that may not...
We are three minutes, so if you could, if you could, we're three minutes, if you could think about summarizing, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, so with digital equity, obviously, we have 10, we have over 10 years of experience of helping people connect to the internet. And we also are an ACP-provided ISP, so that $30 credit can be applied to all of our particular service tiers. So we agree with the report, you are served. We disagree in terms of how they're interpreting that 100 by 20, and we are here to serve Issaquah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Van Moritz?
Yeah, hey, thanks. Thanks, everyone, and thanks for the, the time. I, I think I would probably echo most of Terry's comments, so I'm glad he went before You know, we've, we've been in the Issaquah area for some time, and similar to Comcast, have, you know, we've been, been working on, on methods to provide high-speed data to our customers for well over a decade now. And our focus, you know, on, on service and the capability of the network, especially when it comes to data services over the past couple of years, we think is really unmatched. And this report, I think, is very helpful. We weren't aware of it until last week when we got a copy of it, so it's, it's great to have it. And I think, you know, some of the information in it is very helpful to, to look at. It's helpful to understand, you know, what consumers are, are in need of. It's helpful to understand what the city needs to help its, its citizens, constituents get out of our services, right? So I guess, you know, I'll, I'll just leave it at, at this, you know, thank you for the information. We're looking forward to working on this, to the extent we think it's, you know, generally necessary. And, you know, a few of these issues identified, you know, especially on the educational component, I guess, actually, I'll touch on that, that's something that we find to be actually very important. And to Terry's point, you know, helping technicians address that in-home, as it relates to equipment, placement, things like that, we found that to be a very important aspect of our, of our work. And, you know, the, the programs coming down the pipe for digital equity inclusion, we think there's a lot of compelling work there to be done. So I think I'll just leave it at that. Appreciate it, and looking forward to working with all of you on this.
Thank you so much for your comments. Appreciate it. We don't have any other representatives from any other internet service providers with us tonight, do we?
No, Chairman Hertz, we do not.
All right, thank you. So we have no other members of the public in the audience. I think we're ready to talk. Oh.
Anyone online?
We have no virtual members of the public in attendance.
Thank you, as, as earlier. All right, thank you.
Well, I support the recommendations as they've been presented to us. I wish we had a little bit more leverage, I guess, but it is what it is. So we, as long as we're feeling comfortable about working with Comcast and WAVE and the other ISPs, I, you know, I think that we ask, and like you said, the, now the conversation's more defined than it was before. I think it'd be great if we had an education program, and I, I do worry, I, some of the neighborhoods that have been identified here, I think probably do qualify for low income or to be identified as low income, or they have pockets of low-income people there. I know during the, the pandemic that that was a real concern with the school district, and so whatever we can do to help those folks access, I know that the school district was surprised at how many people did not have as good of access as they had thought at one time. So, but that was because we had four people at home instead of, instead of one. So that was also just a matter of the circumstances. So, but whatever we can do to help people get internet, I think it's one of the things that people have to have now to survive. So, so in general, I am in agreement with all the recommendations. Thank you.
See, and you thought you weren't going to have any opinions on this subject.
I always have opinions.
Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I think from, from my point of view, I appreciate everything that Comcast and the other providers are doing to supplement or give equal access to overcome barriers for the service. So I'm a little not confused, but... So I'm a little not confused, but I want to make sure that we're measuring the right thing as we look at this, right? Is it that the opportunity is out there because we have the right tech, because we have the right infrastructure? It's just a matter of making sure that everyone has an opportunity to get there? Or is the infrastructure itself somehow hampered or broken? And so from what I'm hearing from our Comcast representative at least, it seems that the infrastructure is there. They've been working on it. They're attentive to it, but, and then they're trying to address the other problem of making sure that income and other barriers are overcome, tech in the home is available, et cetera, et cetera, along the way. So when we look at the numbers and the fact that Internet access is, broadband access is somewhat limited in some cases, I think I'd like to hear from my colleagues whether or not the definition for underserved or the definitions that we're using are actually helpful to our discussion and giving us the information that we need for decision-making.
So, yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of factors in this report. There's a lot of data in it. I would love to focus in on this 100 slash 20, right? I would love to say that is the state, you know, that is a state standard that the legislature has come up with, and I'd sort of like to view it through that lens. I think 25, 3 is archaic. So, you know, what fraction of our residents can get 120? Is there anybody who can't get, you know, are there folks who can't get 120 at any price point? What is the price point they can get 120? How does that compare to ACP? You know, I have commercial service for a couple hundred dollars a month, so, you know, I'm spending a lot more than $30 a month to get a lot more than 120 so that I can work at home when I want to work at home. But like, you know, take that 120, that 100 slash 20, and sort of simplify the questions around that, right? Again, is there anybody who can't get it? What does it take to get it? You know, how does that compare? What does, you know, what would an ACP program look like? Does it meet 120? If it's an ACP program that is, you know, half off of a 25 slash 3 service, I don't think that's what we think of as, you know, making sure that our residents have good service available. So I'm curious what the two of you think, if we can simplify the policy question down going forward, because there's so much in here. But like the asymmetric, symmetrical, I mean, I was picking on that issue because most people are doing mostly downloading, right? And the amount of uploading, it's a, to me, it's a little bit of an esoteric point. It's almost like fixed IP addresses. It's like, yeah, that's an issue if you have, if you have, if you're running your own business. But to really simplify this down and say, let's talk about a base standard and basin policies around that? What do you all think?
So just so I understand your comments, you're trying to say that we want to make sure that the standard is available to everybody first, and then evaluate whether or not people have the ability to get that if they want to and at what price point they're able to do it, whether or not some of these programs help at the margin to get them to that price point, right?
Exactly.
Okay. And then that information would then allow us to determine what? We're not, we might not be getting what we're paying for as a city or?
Well, I mean, I would like to know that before doing any advocacy. Like, I would like to understand that. There's so much here that before we start saying, well, we encourage providers to do this, that, or the other thing, I just, I just think there's a lot here. Like, I don't particularly care about advocating for equal tier versus asymmetric, right? Like, I just think that's, that is an esoteric corner. I want to make sure that all of our residents, yeah. To your question, I don't want to advocate for anything until we get this better view around this idea of a basic level of service.
Okay. I think I agree with that. Do you have a nod of a head there? Okay. The next question that I had, I guess, might be for Gene Paul. The Comcast representative talked about some of the information that he gave to the city and the consultant that gave some different measures. Excuse me if I'm being a little bit clunky with my terminology. It's not something I deal with every day, and indicated that some of those items were not included in the report, or are they in the report and we're just missing it? If you could clarify that for us so that when I do get the information from Comcast, I know how to plug it into the proper spot.
Yes, thank you for that. The information I was aware of that we obtained from the ISPs was largely infrastructure mapping. So I think if there was additional information, that might be on the consultant team and myself for either not identifying it or including in the report, but we'll go back and look at that information again.
Okay. I guess I would request that once the city council gets it, if you could write a short addendum to help us plug it into the right place, to put it in the right context, if it is helpful to augment and clarify any of the information that's out there, I think that would help all of us as we're moving forward with this. Thank you.
Councilmember Jeanne Schelz.
Well, I'll just go back to one of the comments from our Comcast representative, and he was pointing out that not everybody needs the 100 slash 20. So I guess my question would be, you know, in terms of, for us that are not familiar with all of these terms and how it works, you know, what would be, what would be the user experience at the end of the day? How can we explain to people what we're talking about, and we're talking about 100 and 20? And what does that mean in terms of the complaints that we've heard? You know, that it's not reliable or that it's, you know, it's in and out and all of those? Can we put those into the kind of examples that people would understand? Like me, people like me would understand. Let's put it that way.
I mean, is the question, do we want to entertain the possibility that we, that a standard other than 100 slash 20 would be the minimum standard that we'd want to consider as a council and as a city?
Yeah, it'd be interesting to know from Comcast, what is the breakdown? How many, he said not everybody needs that, not everybody. But so.
Yeah, I'll just tell you, since we're in the opinion portion, I don't buy that.
Oh.
I think everybody needs 100 slash 20.
Oh, all right. So, okay.
You know.
Yeah, because I thought, well, if that's the case, maybe we need to know what their customer breakdown is. So, but if that's not the case, which you may know better than I do, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would want to see a standard below 100 slash 20.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I see.
Whoops.
I see the Comcast representative, Mr. Davis, has his hand up. Would you like to contain his comment?
No, I think, I think, I think we're good for comments from the ISP providers at this point.
Okay.
I don't feel the need to take more at this moment. I do have one nit with the, with the presentation. There's, there are several areas of the city that are unpopulated, that have, that are color-coded, that might give the, like, I'm looking specifically at the broadband service levels in Issaquah, and there's like a big purple patch up in McCary Woods, which is the parcel of the city that's directly west of Forest Rim, and there's no residents there. McCary Woods is, you know, it's just a parcel of open-space land. So there's this map, there's a lot of open space that's marked as purple that I think, if we're saying what areas don't meet the 100 slash 20, I think that map, you might look at it and go, oh, my gosh, look at all that purple. And I'm not convinced that any of that isn't just land that doesn't have residents on it. So as we talk later, and as we talk about, you know, maybe what meets the 100 slash 20 standard, you know, that this map is a little confusing.
Thank you for that. And I think buried, you know, either in the report or potentially on the website itself, I think there was a statistic for, you know, I think 95% of some of those census tracts were either fewer than 50 people or even unpopulated. So I take a point that we needed to be more careful with how we depict the information.
Well, I've certainly hiked McCary Woods many times, and if anyone is, is living there, it's not because they own a home there.
Other, so just in terms of direction, I think that this report's a great start. I think that the bullet points there get us going in the right direction. I agree with Chair Martz that we need to do a base survey to figure out if 100 slash 20 is available to everybody, and then the underlying pieces, he described it in terms of, are there ways to get people to that through these programs? And we want to make sure that the opportunity is there, and then we want to make sure that people have the means to get there if they so choose to get up to that, that level of data usage and downloading and uploading there. That's, I think I agree with your direction on that.
Well, and let me ask a slightly different question. Can we get the information that we would like from what's already out there? In other words, is the data support parsing in a way to use this 100 slash 20 standard to identify a little further?
So I guess I'll answer the first part, and I'll look to Dave to just confirm this. There is information by census block and census tract that the ISPs provide to the FCC. What's potentially problematic with that information is the way the FCC treats that is if any address in that block or tract has, say, 120, they would flag that entire area as served, whereas you may have somebody, you know, two houses over who may not have that service provider and may not be able to access that information. So I think that's potentially problematic from the data that we have available that is not from a resident responding to a survey. Dave, anything to add on that?
No, I would agree with Gene and that the FCC has begun, they've released a new map with household individual points, but we are still unclear from what we've been working with states and FCC on if the data that they're using, those points, is still extrapolated from potentially census block or census tract data so that all the points that they're showing, again, will just be a blanket service level based on that block.
So, so, I mean, I guess lurking underneath the surface of this feedback is that we're saying that this is something that might require some additional legwork, right, to figure out.
Correct.
So I'm just acknowledging that that's part of the conversation, that where we're at. Councilmember Joe.
So with that in mind, I know that there was some suggestions to a timeline for coming back to council. I trust that if that information is obtainable, but not yet obtained by the time we're to our next date, I don't think there's urgency to get this done by November or the end of the year or anything like that. So please just come back to us when you have what is a best guess or best information-gathering piece for that, I think is the general message.
Yeah. I mean, I guess for me, it's that I don't want to start personally, I just don't want to start telling the Internet service providers, oh, we think you should do this, or we think you should do that, until we really understand, you know, what portion of folks would like to get to that basic level that can't, or it's really expensive, or whatever. And I don't feel like I have that today. You know, some of this information is, you know, there are folks that have a lower level of service, and maybe they just, you know, don't care. Maybe it's just somebody who just checks their email, right, and doesn't, and doesn't feel the need, they don't use video or any of that kind of stuff. But, you know, I certainly think that if you have, you know, if you have any sort of wanting to watch movies or multimedia or any of that kind of stuff, that's all of a sudden we're having a basic 100 megabit for a family is certainly important. So that's my main thing, right? If we're going to consider, you know, the administration has recommended some advocacy, and I'm saying that I would like some additional information around these basic standards before, I personally would want to consider that advocacy. City administrators, that, the sort of feedback that you were looking for from us this evening?
Yes, sir.
And I want to thank everybody in the public who is here this evening and the members of the two Internet service providers for joining us this evening and explaining it and participating, and I want to thank very much the, our consultants. And I realize I ask lots of tough questions, but I am a rocket scientist in my day job, and so, but thank you very much for all this extremely helpful information, and Gene for, for driving this conversation along. Do we have anything else? Any good of the order? All right. Well, with that, we are adjourned at 7:35 PM.